Hello, I'm far from finished.
You want to record?
Yes, you want to look at me?
Tricks.
Please.
If you want to record, write tricks.
It's the action that matters. The Lord says, "We are two or three are gathered; we are in your midst." Let's bow our heads. Almighty and eternal supreme being, the light of all lights, the creator of the universe, we give thanks and sing your praise alone for your guide and protector. Supreme being, please continue to bestow upon us your mercies and compassion, that we shall be pleased and be pleased with all in the city of San Fernando, that we shall glorify your name to the world through our examples. Almighty being, may your light shine upon this city and our country. Keep us away from all forms of darkness and that we shall always acknowledge your greatness. For without your presence, nothing will be achieved. Amen.
Take a seat.
Your worship, the mayor, members of council, Madame acting CEO, Miss Yvette Russo, members of administration. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm a superior of the San Fernando Municipal Police Service. I'll be a safety officer this morning. At the City Hall Comfort Chamber, there are two points of ingress. The first is the door on my left, which is the door we use as an entrance. The second is behind me, which will take us along a corridor down to the side of the building. Should there be an unlikely event, persons are required to use these two points of ingress and assemble at the muster point, which is located at the Harris Promenade Ban. Stand. Thank you very much.
This meeting is set by call to order. Confirmation of the minutes of the seventh statutory meeting on the 26th of July. Corrections and omissions, page one. Two. Three. Four. Five. Can I get confirmation, please?
Your worship, Madame CEO, members of admin, members of council, I move for the approval of the minutes of the seventh statutory meeting of the tenth San Fernando City Council held on Wednesday, the 26th of July, 2017.
Your worship, members of council, acting CEO, members of administration, I stand second.
Who becomes the Paris second by Deputy Mayor Olden Fever? Any against any abstention, emotions carried, matters arising? Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five.
Your worship, members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration. I'd like to make two points on, going back to page four, that is 12.1, as regards the ownership of Marage Lands, Mutu Lands. One of the points I'd like to make, I'd like it to be on record, a document as it relates to the rightful owner and who has access to these grounds, that's one. And two, and I want that to the residents, and two, any date set for the turning off of the lights on the grounds has been set. That's it. Thank you.
Noted. You said, was it two items you said or one?
Two items.
Two items, yeah.
I need to repeat this again or?
No, no. Announcements? Announcements? Are you in announcements?
Good morning, your worship, acting CEO, members of council, members of administration. I rise with regards to page four, the caption, "Ownership, we Marvellous Recreation Grounds", same matter. Actually, I believe there's an error in the headline there, your worship. Marvellous Recreation Ground has nothing to do with the matter with Mutu Lands, it's two separate electoral districts, two separate grounds, your worship. Please be guided accordingly.
And that should have been done in the correction mission. Okay, so there's a clarification here for the recording. It is a 12.1. So we move back to announcements? Any announcements, members? Nope. None. None? Yes. Malcolm Jones. Malcolm Jones. Counselor Paris?
Members of council. Let me start over, please. Your worship, members of admin, members of council, I stand to pay tribute to a titan in the energy sector who passed away a couple of weeks ago, and that would be one Mr. Malcolm Jones. When it is said, all is said and done, with regard to the contribution that Mr. Jones made to Trinidad and Tobago, I am certain that he would go in the annals as one of the major contributors to the recovery of the Trinidad and Tobago economy post our economic crisis of the late 1980s. I always say that I'm very fortunate because of my upbringing and my association with regards to Mr. Manning. And I can see for a fact that Mr. Jones, I remember when I was a little boy at a discussion in, at those boroughs, 1984, 1985, and they were talking about LNG. Little boy, I don't know what this thing is, right? But I was always amongst them. And to see that this LNG thing that they were talking about was the catalyst towards the recovery of our economy in the early 90s, we must pay this gentleman the respect that is due to him. Unfortunately, in our political environment, these things aren't, I mean, I'll leave that alone. But I would like to pay tribute to him and really and truly looking at his wife, Auntie Brenda, and his sons, Mark, Marlon, Matthew, really, it really brought a lot of things to mind at that point, right? And we really need to, we need to, we really need to honor this man for his contribution of what he did to this country. I won't say too much more, but I'm certain that, your worship, you yourself would perhaps want to say a few words on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Joseph, and I immediately-
Paris.
Paris, sorry, my apologies. We attended Mr. Jones funeral. And I can't recall, I've been, I've attended a few funerals in my life, where a deceased got a round of applause. And that happened at the Catholic Church a couple of weeks ago for Mr. Jones funeral. After the eulogy being done by very distinguished persons about his life and his career and his contribution and his background, where he came from, from a very humble beginning, living on Treaton Street and the son of a single parent and many siblings. And being a scholar, having attended presentation in college at the time, it was difficult to go to presentation in college, you had to be extremely outstanding when scholarships were far and few. And being, and may I say, with some sort of reservation, being a humble black man or black boy at the time. Not only did he excel there, but he went on to the West Indies and continued to excel, but he would further scholarships and went abroad and King Marcus Morgan, very distinguished and very qualified in his field and made tremendous contribution to the oil industry. And when Mr. Manning, with his wisdom, decided to transform Trinidad and Tobago, when we had, as Counselor Joseph outlined a while ago there, in the early 1980s, when oil went under seven dollars a barrel, he was part of the team that settled Mr. Manning to look at it and going into the industry and transforming oil and also bringing gas into the fold and also the creation of those various plans that we enjoyed in the post years after that time and that event. So he was an outstanding son of the soil and this morning we are really acknowledging him as a outstanding San Fernandoan who made a name for himself and may long be remembered. He shall rest in peace. It was brought to my attention a while ago that the other persons who died that we need to acknowledge this morning. One of them is Mr. Richard Baird. I got to know Mr. Richard Baird when he, in his advanced stage of life, decided he wanted to learn to play pan and join skipper's team and as a novice. And what is strange about that is that he was playing alongside seven and eight-year-old children. But that was the magnitude of his commitment as a Trinidadian. And he said to me that, "I want to play a pan before I die." I mean, I don't mean that in a negative way. But he stayed and he played the pan and graduated. So I was most surprised when I heard about his demise and from his family, and he fell 600 feet and broke his neck on a hike and that was very unfortunate. We also have a former employee, Mr. Norma Joseph, who has passed from Prestonville. And there's another person, Mrs. Jacques, also from Prestonville, who passed. So can we all stand up for a minute silence, please, to acknowledge the souls of people departed? May the souls of the feet put you forth in rest and peace and rise into glory of heaven. Amen. Committee reports for acceptance.
Your worship, Madame CEO, members of council, members of administration. Springville Paradise rise and ask for the acceptance for the finance plan and allocation of resources committee meetings held on the 4th of July and 11th of July, 2017.
Can I have a second?
Your worship, Madame acting CEO, members of admin, members of council, I beg to second.
All in favor? Any against any abstention, emotions carried, public health?
Good morning, your worship, members of council, members of administration, Madame acting CEO. I, Alderman Johannes Deener, rise to move the motion of acceptance for the committee report of public health meeting held on the 4th of July, 2017.
Members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration. Marvellous thought, thought, Mr. Bella, beg to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotions carried, physical infrastructure and transport?
Your worship, Madame acting CEO, members of admin, members of council, arise to the acceptance of the physical infrastructure and transport committee report meeting held on the 11th of July, 2017.
Your worship, members of council, Madame CEO, members of administration, Springville Paradise, so second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotions carried, personnel committee?
Good morning, Alderman Thomas, rise. His worship, members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration, arise for the acceptance of the personal committee report held on the 11th of July, 2017.
Any, all in favor?
No.
Second, sorry.
Second.
Your worship, members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration. Marvellous thought, Mr. Bella, beg to second.
All in favor? Any against, emotions carried, Counselor Smith? Committee reports for adoption, planning and development?
Your worship, Madame CEO, members of council. Coke, Turbo, rise for the adoption of planning and development committee report held on 11th of July, 2017.
Can I have some second, please?
Your worship, members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration, Marvellous East, so second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotions carried, general purposes?
Your worship, Madame acting CEO, members of admin, members of council, stand for the adoption, sorry, of general purpose committee meetings held on the 11th of July, 2017.
Second. President, your worship, members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration, Marvellous East, so second.
All in favor? Any against? Emotions carried, parks institutions?
Your worship, members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration. Marvellous thought, rise for the adoption of the Parks Institution Committee Report on Meeting Held on the 11th of July, 2017.
Your worship, Madame CEO, members of administration, members of council. Lesafour West, Laramine, rise to second.
All in favor? Any against? Emotions carried, education and new developments?
Council, acting CEO, members of administration, Lesafour East, Superior, rises for the adoption of the Education and Youth Development Committee Report of the meeting held on the 11th of July, 2017.
Can I get a second, please?
Your worship, members of council, members of administration, Madame CEO, Springville Paradise, so second.
All in favor? Any against, emotions carried, arts and culture?
Your worship, members of council, Madame CEO, members of administration. Springville Paradise, rise for the adoption of the Arts and Culture Meeting held on the 4th of July, 2017.
Thank you, Springville Paradise, so second.
Your worship, Madame CEO, members of council, members of administration, Coke, Turbo, rises to second.
All in favor? Any against? Emotions carried, public claims and liabilities?
Your worship, members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration, members of public, good morning. I, Alderman Shane Samuel, rise for the adoption for the committee report of public claims and liabilities committee report for the 4th of July, 2017.
Can I have a second, please?
Good morning, your worship, members of council, members of administration, Madame acting CEO, ladies and gentlemen. I, Alderman Johannes Deener, do second.
All in favor? Any against? Emotions carried, sports and social services?
President, again, your worship. It's a great pleasure, I rise for the adoption of the report, Sports and Social Services, meeting held on the 4th of July, 2017.
Second.
Your worship, members of council, acting CEO, members of administration, Lesafour East, Superior, rises to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotions carried, security and disaster management?
Your worship, members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration. I rise for the adoption of the Security and Disaster Management Committee Report for meeting held on 6th June, 2017.
Any against? All in favor? Any abstention? Emotions carried, tourism and heritage?
Your worship, Madame CEO, members of administration, members of council. I, Anderson Williams, Counselor for Lesafour West, Laramine, rise adopt committee report for meeting held on the 4th of July, 2017.
Second, please.
Your worship, members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration, I rise to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention? Emotions carried, assessment?
Your worship, Madame CEO, members of council, members of administration. I rise and ask for the adoption of the Assessment Committee Meeting held on the 4th of July, 2017.
Your worship, Madame acting CEO, members of council, members of administration, and also Graham, so second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotions carried? Madame CEO, do you have any petitions?
Your worship and members of council, the administration has no questions.
Any motions?
Your worship, again, and council, members of council, we have no motions.
Any personal explanations?
Your worship, no personal explanation.
Any questions?
No questions, your worship.
Virgin matters, members?
Your worship, Madame CEO, members of administration, members of council. I, Counselor, Lesafour West, Laramine, Anderson Williams, Virgin Matter. Two, one of which I don't want to sound repetitive, is the Gulfview Main Road. Please, I will bring it up again, I want to stress it. It goes back, school is starting, this road feeds four to five different schools in my community. Secondly, I have here, in our presence, a resident. And she lives in Cypress Avenue. Before I've been born, more than 30 years now, this resident has been plagued with flooding. It's been worked before the engineers that are here, that are before us, the mayors before us, the councils before us. Could we come together and be the council, actually bring some relief to my residents and the environment of this community? I have visited it on my own numerous times during flood, after flood, and the aftermath is nothing that any human being should have to constantly cope with.
Your concerns are noted, Counselor, and raised with the respective department will reference to the questions that you raised there.
Your worship, members of council, acting CEO, members of administration. I rise this morning, oh, this afternoon, sorry, for two things. One, very briefly, to mention again the spate of crime within our city, your worship. There was a death very close within my ED. And our prayers go out for those in authority to better able them to deal with this scourge that faces us and to remind us all that we are each responsible and invested in making sure that San Fernando and so Trinidad and Tobago is crime-free and a place resplendent with love, cooperation and brotherly and neighborhood. But the real purpose I stood, your worship, is to mention those who have been devastated and continue to be devastated in the United States of America, the state of Texas and in particular Houston and its environs. Your worship, as I said to you before, I have friends and close family living in those areas. And our family has been plagued, as have so many others, with worry and concern, trying to keep in touch to make sure that they haven't lost everything that they've worked so hard for so many years to achieve. They have not lost life, that they are safe. And every time they reach out to us and say, "Yes, we're okay for now, hopefully this is the last of it", we get news of additional rain, winds, that Hurricane Harvey, then Tropical Storm Harvey, then has re-strengthened and become something else and continues to linger and cause damages and loss of life. And to remind us, your worship, my prayers are rising, your worship, because this is something really, as I said, close family who are living there. But it's a great reminder to us here in Trinidad and Tobago. We just had Tropical Storm Brett that did so much damage and that was almost a soft breath, a zephyr compared to the hurricane. And look at damage caused and to remind us that we have to be careful, we have to plan and we have to consider those. Many of us have seen the images on CNN of just outside of Houston. The old people's home, your worship, where they're sitting there in water up to their chests because they cannot move.
Galveston.
Galveston. Houston, where I was not so long ago at a family wedding and seeing the roads that we passed completely covered, trucks completely covered in water. I want to ask everyone, not at this moment, but sometime in your prayer, please remember them and pray for them that they will make it through this alive and well to be able to start again. But also to pray for us here in Trinidad and Tobago. Because just like them, they never thought that they would be in this condition. We often say God is a trini, but even God's patience may run out at some point if we are not careful and look after ourselves. I thank you for the opportunity to say this, your worship, and may God- I thank you for the opportunity to say this, your worship, and may God have mercy on us all and especially on those going through this trauma.
Those concerns are noted, and sense the passion in your voice, having relatives and friends and haven't been there recently, you're peeing, and those of us who look at, look on at the news at night on television, we really pee on those personal experiences, this very, um, this disaster. I would like to take the opportunity to ask the engineering department to investigate for us, um, so the irregularities that exist in the city of San Fernando, and I'm referring to illegal structures, and, and let us make, uh, uh, this is basically a mandate, was to make a comprehensive overhaul of, of San Fernando. This council is committed to making San Fernando a better place. And if we were to use Library Corner as a central point, because we are focusing on Library Corner, and we are going east on Library Corner onto Coffee Street, we have to address the illegal structure there, there, there are too many irregularities and, and the, the, the abandoned properties that is left to, to accumulate garbage and unwanted individuals. If we are speaking about making San Fernando, I don't want to say great again, but clean, then we have a responsibility to the council to address these issues. So we are looking at Coffee Street or Library Corner going east on Coffee Street, irregular structures and, and properties that, that owners are not taking responsibility for. We are looking at Library Corner going north on Point of Pearl Road, as we pass Royal Castle going forward, I know the engineers aware of this building, uh, is owned by, by, I think it's Harries that has been abandoned, and we have, uh, persons living inside, inside of there. And if you go further opposite Palm Slum, there, we have loads of, of debris and gravel for some construction that is occupying the entire pavement. As a child, I woke from Mr. Bella, this San Fernando to go to school, I know children do not walk anymore, but there are a few. And if they are, if they are working on Monday morning, then they'll not be to work on the pavement based on what is happening in front of Chong Studio, I think, on opposite Palm Slum. If we were to go, go, that will be south on High Street from Library Corner, there are also illegal structures, business persons who have extended their business place way beyond the, the pavement. You have some persons again who are, have to walk and using the pavement, have to walk on the street, and they are more or less at risk with taxis. Well, I think the worst, the worst part will be Mukurapo Street, from Library Corner going south on Mukurapo Street, and we have to address this, and I hope you should give me a timeframe when I'm finished with this, this course here this morning, how we go to address those issues. They have scaffolding extended from the property way out into the streets, and they have clothes hanging and, and other paraphernalia, and they have on sale and on display. Some of these, uh, extensions are being held by wooden laths, uh, we'll have a problem if one of those extension fell and damaged somebody, they'll be suing the city, the city corporation. Also, on, on whatever call, Library Street, uh, Library Corner where the Prince Long Tax Stand is going west, we'll try to address issues there. There are buildings, let me go back to Mukurapo Street, on the corner of Keith Street and Mukurapo Street, there's a, a structure, it's a church, the extension is way past the pavement and way past the road reserve, almost on the road. I don't know how those persons have got approval, if it's town and country planning at fault, or what the partners of what, we have to address those issues. There are several churches in San Fernando, there's one on Mukurapo Street before the market that is upstairs, the casino, there's no parking facility, there's a church operating on La Peak Hill, on the corner of La Peak Hill, upstairs of a building, no parking facility. So we have to look at how we grant commission for these business persons who are putting up a business place and going to do business, and they did not cater for parking, and it put a lot of pressure on the, on the corporation. So, Mr. Engineer, I don't know if you can answer me now, however, we want us to address these issues.
President, want to, your worship, members of council, members of administration, general public, may I know that, um, we have been trying to get some of these illegal structures, um, regularized. Owners tend to take it upon themselves with their property to build and when they realize or, or ignore us, and then come to look for approval with a completion certificate. We have about sixty something matters in court with additional, um, of these type of, um, illegal activities to go to court. Some people are complying, some not. And those that, um, who are not complying, we will ask council in the next meeting of, um, planning and development, there will be a listing of all these illegal structures so that a decision can be made to put these buildings on the newspaper.
Publish them?
Yes.
And the owners?
Yes, so that, um, the public will know that these buildings are unsafe, they are not approved by us, or town and country planning, and, um, as such, they should not do business in those buildings. We will not be held responsible for any of these, um, illegal structures. Those with, um, issues of cleaning and so on, we will raise with the public health department in order to get those rectified as quickly as possible. And your worship, yes, I, um, agree with you that in Mukurapo Street there are some serious, well, we have started, even on High Street, we have started, we have given notices, owners are complying and removing all obstructions from the sidewalks and so on. And as we would say that some would not comply, who will want to go the distance, notices are being prepared for them at present.
If they know that we are serious and we are taking action, they will comply. So we have to, at this level, there's one more property off of Lord Street, uh, on the, there's an inside street, you can't run down the street right now, we're close to a tailoring establishment, where the gentleman has, literally claimed the road with, with a manhole and a hydrant, um, station, and is renting that, renting the street as a, as a, as a car park and, and, and gaining revenue. And because of that street, I guess, people are not aware of it, but we have to more or less stand up, and what we have to do, so I expect again that we'll investigate this other matter for me and see where we are with that.
Yes, your worship, I, that street is Montsegil, yeah, speaking of, down at the end, your worship, that was, um, a court matter that this corporation was involved in, and we had lost that judgment.
Who, who was our lawyer?
We have to check.
Now the guy you got arrested this morning.
I'm not sure, your worship, but, um, we will have to check back your records, um, to, to.
I know, I know you have defended a few people in, in this council a, a couple times.
It was quite a while ago, your worship, somewhere in two, two or six or, or before, around that time there.
Okay.
So, and it was, um, where, well, um, the documentation showed that the street did not extend in a, an L shape, but ended as a, then.
But there's a, there's a, a, a wasam manhole on the street?
Yes, they had done that after.
After?
Yes, after the street was, um.
Okay, but let's, let us revisit that and see where, see where we are, because, you know, things happen.
Your worship, members of council and members of administration, um, I note that you spoke about the Harries. Well, just want to inform you all that, um, notice, a cleanup order was served on Mr. Vishno Jaimanga last week Friday, the minimum time is fourteen days, so we are working on that.
Uh, what about?
Florida chicken.
What about the, what about this opposite Palm Slum meeting on others yet?
Well, we, we will get the little ones to serve notice on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as, as you on your feet, so, uh, we're looking at vending on, on High Street, we don't want, we are going into Christmas begins in January, September, I think it's one, uh, one hundred, starts our hundred days of Christmas, that will start just now.
Yeah.
Before that, we'll have Diwali, and then we're going, and then, and then we'll go until, till Valentine's Day, so, which is Ash Wednesday. So let us prepare ourselves now, we don't want to deal Christmas and vending on High Street, we have to deal with it now, there are cuts spread out at the bottom of Short Street, creating problems for cars coming out of Short Street. Let us serve notice, I will ask the police to deal with these matters, please, Inspector, Short Street, and High Street.
Your worship, members of council, Madame acting CEO, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, we have already started working on our strategies. The senior superintendent of municipal police, Mr. Huggins, uh, in company with members of municipal police officers from different regions, would have had a walk warning vendors of the consequences of vending on High Street. Members of my department, San Fernando Municipal Police Service, but even with our minimal strength, have already started dealing with the vending on High Street, and these exercises will continue during the period that you would have spoken about just now and even more. Thank you very much.
Okay, Miss Remis, I, I look forward to your intervention and good positive results for that. Members, the end of the August vacation period means the opening of, of our new school too, but it will be the increase and the impact of our new traffic trial plan. The reasoning behind implementing this plan while the schools were out, really was to minimize the discomfort and confusion and allow us the opportunity to address any issues that would have presented itself. As we draw close to, to September the 4th, I'll take some time to outline major changes that occurred in San Fernando over the years. For instance, in 1945, there was a roundabout at Library Corner. In 1950s, High Street was a two-way street. In 1956, the island separating upper High Street was constructed. In 1966, the clock was positioned at Library Corner on an island that was constructed the same year. In the 1970s, there was an island separating High Street at the top of Monchagrin Street. And in the 1990s, Harris Promenade had four lanes to accommodate traffic. The council at that time made a decision in this chamber to expand the promenade. The core area which was impacted most from that decision was the increase in the densities of schools, churches and businesses around this, around the promenade. So we're talking about institutions such as City Hall, the hospital, the magistrate court, the supreme court, the police station, lawyer offices, and somebody had the wisdom to narrow the streets and expand the promenade. To get a better idea of the needs of our fellow citizens, a survey was carried out in January of this year to identify the major issues facing San Fernandians today. From this, we observed that traffic was the primary concern of all citizens and the impact of productivity in general. As such, several stakeholders, agencies were engaged to execute the task of improving the traffic flow within the city. From the 11th of July, a temporary traffic plan was introduced with assistance of the TTPS, city police, traffic management unit and traffic wardens, and it will continue until we get it right. Expected, yeah, yeah. It was our responsibility to engage in dialogue with the many schools, businesses and taxi drivers associations as we sought out practical solutions to these challenges. Every aspect of this plan took into account the flow of traffic and the prerequisite steps to implement them, as well as their impact from a real perspective. The team who aided in the design of this plan understood that while some suggestions are sound in theory, their applications in the real world require us to adjust the plan as we were along to find a sound solution. An example of this would be the concerns of St. Gabriel's and the impact of the flow of traffic on Lord Street, which is now going in the opposite direction. This location presents some challenges. To combat these issues, the planning team took the following decisions. The repaving of the road surface for easier driving conditions, the opening of the cemetery gates in conjunction with city bylaws from seven to nine AM and to the six PM to allow one-way traffic entering north of Paradise Street and exiting on Keith Street. A lay-by was constructed on the eastern end of Harris Promenade to facilitate the dropping off of passengers. The addition of a third lane was constructed from Paradise Street to the Catholic Church to facilitate the dropping off and picking up at Boys RC School. The additional lane continues from the corner of Harris Street to the corner of Chancery Lane and Independence Avenue. This relocation of the previous tax stands also presented challenges, all of which were met head-on and involved the rule of diplomacy to ensure that the needs of both taxi drivers and their passengers were met. To this, I must commend all the taxi drivers associations who met with us, the issues which were present, as well as those that developed, were addressed. Some of the many welcome changes to this plan has been the resurfing, resurfacing of the roadways, the removal of the, removal of the island accommodating the clock, which allowed us to widen the road, and I want to work on the clock. I didn't realize that this clock meant so, so much to San Fernandians. It's the, this is the most difficult way that I've been through in my life. People meeting many streets and saying, may I wear the clock? May I carry the clock home? May I carry the clock in your pocket? And may I hide the clock, have the clock in city corporation? And I realized that this clock meant so much to San Fernandians, and I want to take the opportunity to say today, the clock will be repositioned and the entire council will go along then dedicate this repositioning put place, which is at the end of the island, close to Republic Bank, within a few days, to give San Fernandians the assurance, the clock will be back. We also dealt with improvement to the parking issues around the central market, the reduction of the wrecking, the reduction of the wrecking service to retain order on the streets. Finally, it must be noted that the planning preparation and the consultative measures executed in the traffic plan held closely to the upcoming changes outlined in our local government reform. The members of this council intend to strengthen the bond between the citizens of San Fernando and the San Fernando city corporation. As this relationship deepens, we want to give the assurance that the development of the city is a priority, not only for us, but for future generations. In conclusion, I'd like to say that we are pleased with the initial results. The hard work and dedication of all who have been involved in this undertaking is a testament to the innate desire of all to make our city a better place. However, the real test will come next Monday, and intentions of this plan will require the cooperation of all citizens. We must try our best to rein in the many bad habits that are pervasive in our society. Earnest efforts are necessary if we are to bring order to our streets. As drivers and commuters, we must all obey the rules of the road, as well as the rules of common courtesy regarding our fellow citizens. It is only when we collectively act with discipline, we can begin to see the required standard of behavior and improve productivity in our city. At this time, I'd like to recognize the success of Aditya Maharaj, who's with us, and Sana Guria, who's also with us, of Grand Memorial Presbyterian School, please stand still. As they captured gold medals for training to Bago at the recent Badminton International Tournament, you all deserve a round of applause, I'll be here to acknowledge it. Now, when we say gold medals, they competed against, not against St., um, St. Paul's and Boys RC, they went against the rest of the world and they made us very proud. These two children have been playing Badminton for only one year, and have also won medals in the local championship competitions earlier this year as well. Through their dedication of their coaches, parents and teachers, they have undoubtedly shown that hard work can achieve. Their achievements should serve us as an important beacon for others who wish to make their families and community proud. I ask that others encourage your children to follow their example. Well done, well done, well done. I had the opportunity, I was invited to speak to them, and I'm not going to take credit for this, was a multinational speaker, and I went down there and I, I was amazed, and councillor, you should be, be proud as well, because the possibility, it is happening, and I was there very early, I think it was in August, and I saw so many young people, the place was full with young people doing positive, positive things. I mean, a lot of things are being said about young people, but there we were, a host of young people, committed parents and coaches on a Sunday, they guided them through the process, well done. We are approaching our independence day celebration, we must all pay homage to our 55th year of our independence this Thursday as patriotic citizens. This year, I must commend the actions of one of our largest corporate citizens, Ansa McCall, and their esteemed chairman, Mr. Andrew Savgar. His decision to carry on the yearly national tradition of fireworks displaying San Fernando in Port Estre, underpins the spirit of patriotism and the necessary corporate social responsibility that all businesses of this stature should emulate. In doing so, Mr. Andrew Savgar not only continues in the traditional national social responsibility, which was the hallmark of his father, the late Mr. Anthony Savgar, but also the fireworks display will also be the delight of tens of thousands for San Fernandians and their families who enjoy this yearly display, which brings our community closer together. And I want to say that, um, that will be in San. And I want to say that that will be in San Fernando Hill. And 8 o'clock starts on Thursday night. And one of our councillors, Councilor Wilson, has represented us there. And that will be the launch because it will be in her, Edie. So she's supposed to be there this morning representing us. And what I've been told, Mr. Savgar, yesterday, this will be out of this world. It is something beyond our imagination, so it was to look forward to. Aunt Sam MacCall coming out in the full flight and San Fernandians will be blown. Put your pets away by the week and make sure you secure your family and get it at a good vantage site to enjoy the spectacle. But on the other hand, on behalf of the citizens of San Fernando, we want to thank Aunt Sam MacCall for this gesture. Our nation has grown by leaps and bounds from 1962 until now. And with most growth, there is struggle and pain, but we have persevered and continue to grow as a nation. Relative to some countries, we are in the youth of our independence. However, our advantage is our capability and opportunity to learn from the failures and successes of others. With this in mind, I call on all the citizens to remember our national motto, "Together we aspire, together we achieve." For it is only when we all move forward together in a patriotic unison we will be able to see a nation Dr. Williams envisioned. A country of productive, disciplined, and tolerant citizens that are ready to take our nation to higher heights. I thank you. I want, I will ask to our councillors to make a contribution to our young heroes. I will start with Aditya Maharaj and I'll ask Councilor Smith, who was at the end, to come forward and do this distribution for us, please. You all have to go inside and, 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 and then come here. And what is... So you all work center there and you serve or turn around to the busy camera. You all be on YouTube. Smile, be bestful forward, Aditya. Yeah. That's the, here's the boy, the boy. The councillor was indeed there this one. Can we all start so we can get a picture too? Yeah, yeah, yeah. At this point, we'll... And we'll invite our guests with us this evening to have lunch with us at the auditorium. And we celebrate our independence. We all invite to share the evening with us. Oh, there's one more presentation to be made. I will have to come forward this morning.
Miss World Pageant 2017, this money was generated at an auction towards the mayor's fund to assist in flood relief.
He was generated during the talent part of the Miss World competition. And his worship was most present and it was an auction for a bottle of champagne in a basket. And although I think he generously contributed to that total, tried to win it for his lovely wife, who was in attendance, it was given to us.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you for being with us today. And please join us for lunch at the auditorium.
Which is a palm tree that grows to 60 to 80 feet tall. It flowers once and then dies. It is from South India, Southeastern Asia, Sri Lanka, and so on. We have one here in San Fernando for any of you who want to see it before it dies. There are some in the botanical gardens and so on, but there's one here in San Fernando. The first one we know of in San Fernando. If you turn onto Harris Street from Rushworth Street, it will be on your left-hand side. The fourth lot up, there are two empty lots at the start, a little house and an empty lot. You look to the back, you will see our Talipot Farm, which has been flowering for the last little while and will be dying shortly. So it's something amazing to see. I think ours is closer today, 70, 75 feet. So for anybody who's interested, you could go have a look.
I'm going to be a councillor again soon. The struggle of Marbella is indeed my privilege and honour to give special congratulations, in particular to the students of the Marbella South Secondary School and their excellent performance at the CSE examinations. Historically, Marbella South Secondary, formerly known as Marbella Junior Secondary, was a labelled school because of its physical location and the challenges that they experienced with the discipline. However, with the CSE education and the changes that took place in the administration of the school, it has led to a involvement and improvement in the standard of the academic and behavioural aspects of the school. And this year, there was carried in two newspapers about the success of the school, with more than 15 students getting five awards in their results. And sometimes we take these things for granted, right? But we want to say congratulations to Mr. Jourab, the academic staff at the Fertilitarian School, that have been going from strength to strength and high times. Thank you. It's really wonderful.
My name is Sana Guria. I live in Laramie. My name is Aditya Guria. I live in Princess Laramie. I started eating. Well, the only places I went was Chukwana Stadium and Takariya, Takariya National Park. I went in Chukwana and Takariya National Park. We went Takariya National Park. Yes, I would. Because I'm... And if you just stick to video games or jazz, you wouldn't get into activities. It's my mental person. Yes, I don't just stay calm and I'm busy and just carry on. And then get some.
It's called reported and it's public service delivery through digital. So just a little bit about us. We are traditionally a digital marketing agency. So some of our clients include Caribbean Airlines, Liat, and the Ministry of National Security in Jamaica. We did after them call Stay Alert, which has had a lot of success. And we all know Flow. We represent Flow in Trinidad as well as in Barbados. We represent GTNT, which is a telephone company, and many other partners around the region. I'm sure some of you see somebody carry their social media memes that go viral. Our firm is responsible for doing things like that. So traditionally, we're in advertising and marketing, but recently we branched off into creating technological solutions for government agencies such as yourself. So the goal of the app is to improve the delivery and accountability of public services by empowering the public to support them. So the app would work, is that it be available on your mobile phone. Whenever you buy a phone from the mobile or digital cell, the app would come free installing your phone. And the app would allow members of the public to report anything in their area that needs your attention, whether it's a pothole, whether it's a cloud drain, whether it's an insect vector control unit, whatever you need, whatever the public needs assistance with, and it's covered under your permit, you will automatically get an electronic report by email telling you that this problem exists and then you coordinate geographically to go and attend to it and so on. If for whatever reason the report comes to you and it isn't covered by the council, let's say for example, unless certain roads that are maintained by the Ministry of Works or something, the council, the app would be intelligent enough to know that. And will allow you to reassign it to the Ministry of Works as the case may be. I know certain drains within the Ministry of Works and certain drains are your responsibility. So the app is intelligent enough to differentiate between all of them. You'll be able to report crime, report leaks. I know in some cases you don't report, you don't repair leaks yourself, that might be for wasted attention, but you have copied on the report because at the end of the day, it affects your constituents, right? So how will it work? As I mentioned, it will be preloaded onto mobile phones from the mobile and digital cell when you purchase your phone. We also have a massive advertising campaign on Facebook and Twitter, even on the public domain. If this app exists, it can use it to report whether they have to, the report goes to the regional corporation or the city council. And it's saved online via our web dashboard, which only you and authorized members have access.
This is when a pier road, Marbella and Cars and Now, opposite the white, it's going to wind up long there. Right, so all the hard questions, tell me, tell you, about your, about your... What I heard yesterday, I heard about salaries, I heard about manpower. You're making it again, eh? You're making it again.
As soon as you're ready, as you're ready.
Already like sweating.
Yeah, the manpower is very, we have a very, very short. We just have like a whole flock of people on the patrol, sometimes two, sometimes three. And school went, school opens on Monday, it's going to be a lot because I mean, to be honest, it's a lot. It's really a lot to do with. I mean, actually, the traffic here for now is a bit more than usual. But because it's strenuous, but it's a little bit weird. Try to try, but it's going to be a lot, it's going to be a lot. Yes, it would have parents wanting to come and make sure that their children get, get out of this street, you know? I mean, that's, that's something that, I mean, being a parent, it's something that you really want to see because of the situation.
You all know, normally... So this is going much better and you know, you can come here this time.
Whatever, but that was something that I asked for previously when I spoke to you the very first time. I told you, these taxis, yeah, these taxis from there, I mean, need to, to be moved, I mean, like to somewhere a bit more convenient. But you don't think that from there, they, they... But you don't think that from there, they, they, if they're allowed to pass like higher up here, it wouldn't be easy for they to turn off?
Well, take the consideration, yes, I mean, it's not passing complete, we're watching and looking for improvement as we go along.
You're the real test we're kicking on one day.
Yeah, but I think, you know, it's, it's something that you could probably take into consideration where they could pass like here, so they turn off there.
Unchanging, unchanging, so far the unchanging.
Well, changes, you know, it's a traffic flow a lot better. Right, it's just that we, we have a problem down this side with the passengers coming to us because something, something like, what is that going too far?
Don't worry, I have a thing.
Distance.
From there to here.
But at the same time, passengers see otherwise, but as you said, there's so many. If you observe the Laramie sign quite down there, passengers appear not scared. So when they come, they ask him to go with Laramie sign.
They had a run up for a week to take, to see what it here looks like, then you keep on. So you know, because the first week is gonna be an average. Four one students, the parents come in, they want to pick up. After a week and they get accustomed a little bit different. So I think that once you settle on your final place and then you get signage and things, it's gonna make a difference.
I understand that, but as we spoke about before, we have had dialogues of going with the road that way. I mean, communicating, we agree, disagree and we have been, that are important. I mean, look at the Marbella, Marbella is perfect where they are, perfect, good, how does that matter?
Yeah, they're getting the best part.
Yeah, they're getting the best part. The sense of it.
It's making sense because they headed that way.
Exactly.
Technically, we headed that way too.
Yeah, but we headed that way, not all the time because when school opened, when school opened, right? When school reopened, sorry. We have a lot of traffic dealing with the head of the morning.
That's what we bring you back here and bring you through here.
We break through here, we have a lot easier access to here. So we go up here.
And you go with that, just wait until the week or so and put it in place.
We're still waiting patient for this area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sunday morning, picked up here and looking, looking, presenting. So we, it's work in progress, work in, as you go along.
Good.
So, what are you doing in San Fernando? Well, I'm here with the mayor of San Fernando, the man Regrelo. And what we're doing is we're having a look at the pre-school circulation traffic. Having a chat with the traffic wardens, with the taxi drivers, looking at the ebb and flow of traffic throughout the day. Obviously, there's been a dramatic improvement in the traffic circulation. This is really the brainchild of the mayor and certainly is one that is extremely commendable. We're gonna have the real test of patience as we open school. I mean, you have presentation college, you have grand school, you have Napremagills, you have Boys RC, St Gabriel's, Convent. We have so much to look at in terms of intersection, particularly with the beginners to school where parents are a little bit more anxious to see it right in the first week. So we're doing a little bit of anticipatory planning. We've just had some suggestions set on the road, which have been said before with his worship, the mayor, as to tweaks here and there. So we're proposing to have a monitor of the situation and see the adjustments that are necessary to start to get this in the right zone post commencement of school. There are proposals by the Uticot itself, which Cabinet has to consider very pointedly on passing in San Fernando in and around this particular area. Cabinet is, obviously, will have to consider that position and to bring it forward. In fact, I can tell you that there's a proposal already in hand to that, but it must be done in coordination with the waterfront tightening up because the money to back these projects is a critical issue and therefore the coordination of funding and the commencement of works have to be very carefully interwoven. So that's being actively addressed, that's one option. And there are other options that are being explored, we're in some discussions right now with certain landowners in the area, very informal discussions. Correct? Well, I wasn't gonna call names, but his worship has. So we have some discussions afoot to see what we can do to replace that which was lost when the teaching hospital came in. Yes, you're clearly gonna have to look at multi-storying. Remember that we're not factoring only the utilization of the downtown for traffic. We're talking about utilization of water taxi, the hospital, if you go to the hospital at visiting hours, it's a dramatically bad situation that has been left there with people parking in the mud and sliding etc. So waterfront usage anticipated to the future, water taxi usage, hospital usage, San Fernando pedestrian, shopping commercial utilization. All of that has to be put together and is being put together and is near perfection in terms of proposals to move forward, which I will be asking the relevant line minister to advance to the cabinet for consideration. It is, as far as I'm aware, it's certainly in train. Again, that fire station is part of the coordinated development of the waterfront. As you know, we've done the social surveys for the waterfront. The communities that live in the areas, the communities that work in the areas, all of those are being factored in. And certainly from my point of view as MP for San Fernando West, I am a very strong advocate for this and I'll be agitating those issues with my colleagues, the Minister of Finance and certainly with my cabinet colleagues for consideration. We are in active discussions with the social conditions there and we're working on the proposals there. There is a very strong housing development that is to come to San Fernando West in particular to take care of our community needs. And again, that is tied in with some of our waterfront development issues. Certainly have not made a comment on this issue, so his question I've had for the day, quite interesting. I can say with absolute certainty that I have no business with that for a number of reasons which are purely constitutional and correct. This matter is a matter for the Trinidadian Police Service. The normal course for criminal investigations is that the Director of Public Prosecutions would give instructions to the police. No member of any executive has any business in that and in particular, all the much more so on this occasion where a member of the executive is in fact involved as witnesses in the, in the, in the, in matters which may or may not be the position of consideration by the TTPS. We keep a very careful distance away from the business of the police service and that of the Office of the Director of Public Prosecutions. No doubt this matter has gripped the national attention because it's been one long in the making. And we've had a lot to say on this issue on the political platform and elsewhere, but it's really now a requirement of due process and consideration and everyone is entitled to that. I really couldn't tell you, I've been in San Fernando in constituency and I'm paying attention to the constituency. I said no member of the executive can or ought to be involved, meaning the government. And the Attorney General should not be busy himself with the business of the police or the DPP. Those are independent creatures under the constitution. This matter of a charge, if there is one, would have been on the advice of the Director of Public Prosecutions. That is the independent office holder to whom the questions can be addressed. I, I, you'd really have to address all of those concerns to the Commissioner of Police and to the Director of Public Prosecutions.
I wanna ask you about yesterday's incident with Watson Duke. He did something that, I mean, I got a quality shot. What was your personal take on Watson Duke?
Well, it was an interesting swim. By jet ski, boat, pier off and otherwise. Let's not take away from the position. The fact is that the Prime Minister's Office, the Ministry of Works and Transport, the Chambers of Commerce, the Board of the Port Authority have been speaking to the sea bridge issue. There is an investigation afoot, there is certainly quite a large amount of public opinion and comment on this issue. The issue of the sea bridge and the air bridge is one which is of great concern to the government of Trinidad and Tobago. The long-term solution is a critical one and the government is squarely focused on making sure that we work our way through our short-term, medium-term and long-term position of solution. The pulling of the superfast glacier in breach of its contract, which should have taken us to October, really has cascaded all of these events. That contract really should have existed until the end of October. That would have taken us past the high season for the replacement of vessels and into the low season where ferries are easily available. There is a start and a stop to all of this and there will be full accountability to the public. The Minister of Works and Transport, Minister Sinan, has been very aggressive in ensuring that the port authority does what it ought to do and certainly as you're aware, there's a full investigation which is afoot on the Mute investigation, which will no doubt come to the public attention very shortly as we come to the end of the month.
You think what Watson Duke did was warranted?
I can't speak for Mr. Watson Duke, nor do I pretend to, nor do I wish to. He's entitled to his form of advocacy and this is a country where democracy is certainly celebrated and Mr. Duke is free to do as he chooses.
Now we see the coast guard to wipe the hand coming, you think, you think it was, it was right of the coast guard, knowing that a person lied to that was, to withdraw yourself from, from lending services to the case of emergency, okay?
First of all, I cannot agree with you that coast guard wiped itself from the position. I certainly don't see that that was the case. As I recall, right there before the swim, the coast guard vessels were in bay. Certainly, the caution was a very proper caution on the part of the coast guard, warning that it was a dangerous event on the thing. And I think that they were quite correct in doing what they did. Mr. Duke had arranged his affairs, his swim to not, not to quite be a swim, but the point is he undertook his protest and that is his entitlement to do so. So I don't certainly accept for one moment that the coast guard was not involved or was not cautious. They did as they should have done, which is to warn people of foolish events or the risks associated with it. It would have been a dereliction of their duty had they not done that.
Well, it's me, the party king, when I do make it and it's make everybody sing.